...in America, and to the record which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Kalanowski, would you take a roll, please?
Um, Mr. Canning.
President.
Mr. Traxel.
Here.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Here.
Attorney Oshin.
Present.
Deputy Chief Myers, I can't see you here unless you're... Stay here today.
Not here.
Okay, um, Chief Patterson.
Here.
Chief Segrevke.
Here.
Deputy Chief Gassior.
Here.
Engineer Jason Doc.
Here.
Mr. Melicich.
Here.
Mr. Gorman.
Here.
Mr. Volkman.
Here.
Robin Deo, present. Janice Melonowski, present.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The Water Works Board is a three-member board, so we will exclude for the purpose of this meeting Councilman DeYoung and Councilman Getzoff. Minutes of the November fourteenth, two thousand eighteen, meeting.
So who was present? Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's three zero. Claims and additional claims?
No additional claims.
Thank you. Motion of the Board?
Move to accept that, presented by the President.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Three zero. Any reports from the staff?
No reports.
Thank you. Councilmembers? No, we have no old business, we have no new business. Is there any business from the floor regarding waterworks? Any business from the floor regarding waterworks? Hearing about this meeting is adjourned.
Good evening, we'll move right into the redevelopment commission meeting for Wednesday, December twelfth, and we'll add Mr. DeYoung and Mr. Getzoff back to the, uh, the role. Uh, first item on the agenda is the minutes of the November fourteenth public meeting.
So who did present, Mr. President?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Claims, Mrs. Melonowski, any additional claims?
No additional claims.
Mr. President, move to present, uh, claims that present.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second on claims, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Uh, any reports, Mr. Volkman, on redevelopment?
No reports.
There's no reports? Councilmembers, any report on redevelopment?
No.
And we have no old business, so we'll move right into new business. Uh, we have item A, it's considered approval of the amount of one thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars to the Shererville Chamber of Commerce for completion of the facade improvement program garage. Mr. Volkman?
This, the, uh, chamber, this is the Chamber's office on Joliet Street, this is the completion of their facade program. The only thing that they had left to do is they were, um, working on the garage behind the building to, uh, improve it and match the house. their second application. This completes their second facade application on that property.
Thank you, Mr. Volkman. Pleasure of the Board.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero, thank you. At this time, we'll open up business from the floor, any business from the floor regarding redevelopment? Any business from the floor regarding redevelopment? No business from the floor, this meeting's... Excuse me, Mr. Trump.
Thank you. I just want to report to the, uh, Commission, the, uh, change of some laws that occurred effective July one this year, that will require special meeting information to be, uh, prepared and reported to the public, uh, that relates to what impacts TIF funds collected in the TIF districts have on taxing units, non taxing units and tax units. Bob and I have looked at preliminarily, and we will need to, uh, prepare some materials. So you'll see something a little bit different in the first couple of months of next year to prepare that for you, and then prepare it for explanation and delivery to the citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Oshin. Um, did I open it up to the floor for any comments from the floor on redevelopment? No comments from the floor, this meeting is adjourned, we'll move right into the utility board meeting.
Well, the utility board meeting, board for Wednesday, December twelfth, at, uh, seven oh seven PM. Um, but the record reflect the same members that were at the redevelopment commission are present here for the utility board meeting. The minutes of the November fourteenth, two thousand eighteen, public meeting, pleasure of the, uh, utility board members.
So moved.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in favor, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Any additional claims for utilities?
No additional claims.
Pleasure of the utility board members on claims.
So who was President?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Any report from staff members on utilities?
Uh, no reports.
Any report numbers on utilities at this time?
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, Bob, the work on two thirteen, uh, you did some follow-up with, uh, Mr. Hewitt, uh, that ended up to be NIPSCO that was doing all of the trimming, all the way from the Dyer line, or actually in Dyer, all the way to the S Herb in Shererville.
That's correct.
That is, that was NIPSCO that...
Well, they're contracted.
They're contracted. Okay. Cause I, I got some calls from, uh, people, you know, cause they actually trimmed the, the brush part of the fire side, ever seen it, to the, uh, south, to, um, and people in the fire code and actually kind of affected their, uh...
That's kind of their buffer.
Yeah, kind of their buffer of the traffic and stuff.
But all, all of that area is located within the right of way of two thirteen.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Very good. Um, there's no old business before us in utilities, uh, there's no new business before us. Any business from the floor regarding utilities? Any business from the floor regarding utilities? No business from the floor. Hearing and seeing none, this is adjourned, we'll go on to the town council.
I'd like to call the town council meeting for Wednesday, December twelfth, two thousand eighteen, at seven eleven PM. Uh, we'll call it the same as the utility board members, so we'll go to the minutes of November fourteen, two thousand eighteen, and November nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, public meeting.
So who was President?
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Claims and additional claims, Mr. President?
No additional claims.
President Board?
Move to accept claims that presented, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Reports from staff?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I do have a couple of reports. Um, I've met with Attorney Oshin, and we contacted the Enterprise Rentals on the equipment lease that the town was entering into with them, and I think we, we've worked out all the terms, we're waiting for an addendum to that lease, um, and we also have the first, uh, lease, equity leases for the first aid vehicles that we're gonna acquire from, uh, Enterprise, and I've looked for authorization from you and the way of motion to approve, uh, the Enterprise lease and the eight equity leases for the first aid vehicles, pending the final review and the addendum by Mr. Oshin.
Board members?
Mr. President has stated from, uh, town manager, how to go ahead and make the recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Any other, Mr. Wolf?
I do have one other report. The owners of eight and twelve West Joliet Street had approached the town, uh, offering their properties for sale. Uh, we did go through and make uniform offers on both of those properties, and, uh, through negotiations, the owners have accepted, uh, the town's offer of, for eight West Joliet Street at one hundred and thirty-four thousand, and twelve West Joliet Street at two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Uh, the twelve West Joliet Street had, had some conditions, um, one of the conditions was that they have one hundred and twenty days to vacate the property after closing, and, um, the, I don't remember the other ones, but they, the other ones were mine, significant. The only one that was kind of caught my eye was one hundred and twenty days seemed to be a long time. I don't know what your recommendation would be, but I'd like you to consider authorizing the closing of both of those properties, um, for the town's redevelopment efforts on Joliet Street.
Uh, probably, um, one hundred and twenty is as long, so maybe we can compromise and then just split it in half to go with sixty days.
Sixty?
Yes. If everybody's fine with that, I'll board with you.
Mr. President, I'd move to authorize on Andrew Bob, welcome to engage in the, um, offer to purchase both of these properties that presented by town manager, because sixty days that they have to close to get out.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Any other, Mr. Volkman?
That's it.
Any other reports from staff? Reports from staff? Chief Segrevke, any reports?
No reports.
Councilmembers? Anything? Okay, we're hearing them, and we'll move on then. Uh, at this time, we'll open up the floor for, uh, public comment regarding agenda items. This is just for public comment regarding agenda items tonight. Public comments regarding agenda items. Hearing none, and we will now close the floor and continue on. Under, um, old business, uh, we will consider subjects of enterprise vehicle leasing agreement for town vehicles deferred from July eleventh, two thousand eighteen meeting.
Oh, we just did that.
We just said, I just... Hey, sorry. We'll just take that. All right, under, uh, there's no other old business, so we'll go under new business, ordinance number nineteen thirty-two. This ordinance is establishing compensation salaries and wages for officials and employees of the town of Shererville, Lake County, Indiana, classifying certain positions of employment together with its pay repealing and amending prior ordinances in conflict here with and declaring that, and that an emergency exists. Mr. Volkman?
Uh, this is our annual salary ordinance, um, you know, it's been circulated to all of you. Uh, there's been a couple of changes in it this year where we added some of the policies of the police department to have, have them embedded, uh, as part of our internal controls under legislative authority. Uh, you've all had a chance to review them, their, their standard policies that the police department's had for quite some time, it, it relates to their leave and their vehicle policy. Other than that, there, all of the changes of the salary ordinance, there's a three percent raise for all employees across the board, and, um, some slight adjustments in different positions within, in the ordinance.
Yes, I understand. Pleasure of the Board.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
And Mr. Volkman, um, you will add that, uh, there was one line item that was missing in the first page.
Yeah, line one oh one.
Line one oh one, I've got that. That would be, needed to be added. Awesome. And under those, under that situation, I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second, this is first reading, correct?
Step ahead, yes. I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Motion to adopt ordinance number nineteen thirty-two.
We have a motion to adopt?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-three is a resolution to transfer funds within the category of appropriation, Mr. Melonowski?
This is for our cable TV fund, uh, we're transferring a hundred thousand dollars from the three sixty-four to the one hundred to be able to transfer out again, from the one hundred level of the cable TV fund to our promotional fund of three hundred level of one hundred thousand dollars.
President Board?
So who was President?
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Consider approval payment in the amount of one thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars to the Shererville Chamber of Commerce for completion of the fa- uh, facial improvement, uh, program, garage from redevelopment commission agenda, this is already spoken about, so I will just ask you to vote.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Award bid for the Roman Park Vincent and dugouts to fence masters per recommendations by the park board, Mr. Volkman?
Uh, Mr. Melicich, I'm sorry. John.
Thank you, uh, the park board received three bids, uh, they were reviewed by staff and the architect, one bid was rejected cause of, uh, some documents were not in the bid package, um, we had one base bid and three alternates as part of the bid, the park board would like to recommend the council board the, uh, bid to fence masters, the base bid, alternate one and alternate two.
Pleasure of the Board, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Schmidt. Are you talking, so the fencing is strictly just for the, the ball fields, what was your last comment about you divided it out how?
We had a base bid, they include the fencing and dugouts, and alternate, they included vinyl coating for the fencing, and alternate for the front entrance gate, and alternate for netting between the fields.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Schmidt. I, uh, I move to approve the award of bid on the recommendation of our park superintendent, um, with, uh, fence master for a recommendation, for the recommendation by the park board.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Consider acceptance of board firm's first amendment to annexation and development agreement, Mr. Volkman?
Mr. Chairman, the, if you, if you recall, we just completed the annexation of a little three and a half acre parcel along ninety-first, that's in conjunction with the board's farm development and trade back properties, well, now we need to include that into their development agreement, and that's what this, this is the amendment to that annexation, to make the standards of the development agreement applicable to this property.
President Board?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Consider acceptance of agreement, uh, agreement covering reconstruction of the roadway, reconstruction of railroad highway grade crossing, and relocation of grade crossing warning devices between the town Shererville and North Fork Southern Railroad Company for Eagle Ridge Drive, Pency Greenway Trail, contingent upon attorney reviewing acceptance by the railroad. Mr. Oshin?
This is another of the, uh, detailed documents to finish up the parcel acquisition for the commencement of the trail project and ultimately the, uh, the things that we would like to, there are a handful of them here at the backside.
Mr. Chairman, and, and the companions of this is G, which is just the other railroad, same moving, different railroad.
Mr. Chairman, I move to, I move to approve the, uh, acceptance on the recommendation, Mr. Oshin.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, consider acceptance of agreement covering reconstruction of grade road, I almost thought it was going to be the same, grade, I know?
Yes.
Okay. A reconstruction of railroad, reconstruction of railroad highway grade crossing, relocation of grade crossing, warning devices between town Shererville and Wisconsin Central, LTD, Eagle Ridge Drive, Pency Greenway, uh, contingent upon attorney review and acceptance by the railroad. Mr. Oshin?
This is the CN railroad component of the documentation that you just approved, and for North Fork's, uh, excellent.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Schmidt.
And for the audience's knowledge, that these are the railroads that are over on Eagle Ridge Drive that, that we have to, um, that we're accepting so we can continue with our bike trails, uh, to that area, right, Mr. Schmidt?
That's true.
I move to approve, uh, I, I agree.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Consider acceptance and approval of license for pedestrian and bicycle crossing between Wisconsin Central LTD and town Shererville for Pency Greenway. Mr. Volkman?
This is, actually goes in companion with the other items we just approved, this is a license agreement with the CN, the, I imagine, the Wisconsin Central is, is titled to that, but CN holds Wisconsin Central on it.
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Consider approval to purchase a perpetual easement from the Wisconsin Central LTD for the Pency Greenway loan of KB9 Eagle Ridge Drive by two thirteen, and the amount of five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Mr. Volkman?
This is the same, the exact same location, this is all for the crossing for the bike trail on two hundred and thirteen Street, Eagle Ridge Drive.
President Board?
The Board? Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
I believe that completes all of the property transactions for the Pency Trail.
Amen.
I see a common theme between the two.
Yeah. Okay, consider a Pency massage establishment employee application for the following per board safety recommendations, map and date page might like the massage nineteen fifty-five order of course. Mr. Volkman?
This, it's just an employee of an existing business, the business was located on Forest Ridge Drive, uh, Forest Ridge Academy, uh, the building that they were in, and they relocated to this, to new location.
Okay. President Board?
Mr. President, move to accept, presented by these, uh, review employees.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Consider acceptance of donations for seventy dollars, Mrs. Melonowski?
This is answer, November thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, um, the first one is for the Shererville Animal Control from Pedro Trejo for fifty dollars, and then I have one here for donation fund for fire equipment, pedestrian donator, ring off finger, twenty dollars, I'm going to refer to Chief Patterson what ring off finger means, possibly?
We had a, uh, a civilian come into the fire station with a wedding ring stuck on her finger, um, her finger was severely swollen, um, we had to cut this ring off, and she just wanted to do some type of donation to the fire department for taking care of the problem for her.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And that's a cash donation, twenty dollars. Thank you for that explanation. And then, one other one that I have to add to this agenda for Chief Patterson was, um, a firefighter American flag made out of wood was donated by Scott Black, six oh seven, East Joliet Street, he donated this to the fire department, and it has a value estimated at two hundred dollars, so this would be an in-kind donation of two hundred dollars for the wood flag. And then the grand total then would bring this to two hundred and seventy dollars.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Appointment of Director of Operations? Mr. Volkman?
As, uh, Mr. Chairman, we've been, uh, looking to fill a position of Director of Operations, and, uh, we did interview, it was posted internally with the town Shererville, and, uh, we did interview four candidates, and, uh, I'm happy to report, uh, the top candidate was selected by the committee, and the recommendation was for Jim Gorman to be promoted to Director of Operations.
Okay, thank you. President Board?
Move to accept the appointment for operations as Jim Gorman.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Congratulations, gentlemen, congratulations.
I personally thank you guys for the vote of confidence, looking forward to working with Bob in the administration department and with other department heads and Janice, uh, and I'd also like to thank my family who's here, they stood by me the whole time in the last twenty-five years with the town, so looking forward to my next, uh, adventure. Thank you.
The next twenty-five years, huh?
Yes.
At the, this time, we have the election of two thousand nineteen town council officers, uh, we will start first with president and vice president appointments.
I'd like to recommend the, uh, town council president to be, uh, Tom Faye Smith, and the vice president, myself and Mike Traxel.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Utility Board, two thousand nineteen, president and vice president appointments?
Mr. President, I, I recommend, uh, Mr., uh, Bob Getzoff as the utility board president with Mr. Traxel as the vice president.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. We have the redevelopment commission, two thousand nineteen, president and vice president appointments.
Mr. President, move to nominate Mike Traxel as redevelopment commission president and Tom Schmidt, vice president.
We have a motion on the floor?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Water Works Board, two thousand nineteen, three-year term, one, uh, member, her name's in, uh, twelve thirty-one twenty-one, president and vice president appointments.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I recommend, uh, Mr. Kevin Conley as the waterworks president, and, uh, myself, Tom Schmidt, as the vice president of the water board, and, and the, uh, the one member that's, that's up for appointment, I, I would re- uh, recommend myself as the, uh, to keep the appointment that I've had on the water board.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Appointment of attorney for town redevelopment commission, waterworks board, utility board, town council, economic development commission, and town court, um, two thousand nineteen.
Mr. President, move to reappoint the law firm, Oshin Hyperdysitis.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Appointment of attorney for planning commission board and zoning appeals and park board for two thousand nineteen.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move to, I move to appoint, uh, the Burke, Constanza, and Carberry group as our attorney for the planning commission board and zoning and park board.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Hearing none of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Appointment of Attorney for Border Safety, two thousand and nineteen.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. President, move to reappoint the law firm, Lisa and Wiley.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? Hearing none of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Appointment of Town Engineer for two thousand and nineteen. Mr. President. Mr. Traxel.
I'm going to retain the, uh, engineering for the Robin Engineering.
We have a motion.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Appointment for Plant Commission Member, two thousand and nineteen, this is one appointment, uh, it's a four-year term expiring on twelve thirty-one twenty-two, Board.
Move to reappoint Mr. Gary DeMajer.
We have a motion. Second, any discussion? Hearing none of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Appointing Plant Commission Staff Member, two thousand and nineteen, this is three staff member appointment, one year term expiring at, uh, twelve thirty-one of nineteen.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Schmidt.
I, I move to, to reappoint the, the three staff members, Mr. Thomas Anderson, Mr. Dale Rudd, and Mr. David Jarazuski as our three staff members, uh, to the Plant Commission for two thousand and nineteen.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And second, any discussion? Hearing none of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Point Border Zoning Appeal, two thousand and nineteen, one appointment replaced for, uh, Michael Golosich, term expires on twelve thirty-one of nineteen, and then one appointment, four-year term expiring on twelve thirty-one twenty-two, must be a Plant Commission Member. Pleasure, the board. Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
Uh, for the replacement for Mr. Michael Golosich, with the term expiring in twelve thirty-one nineteen, I move to appoint Mr. Rick Talensky to that, to that board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, uh, you're looking for an appointment for?
Four-year term expiring on twelve thirty-one.
This number, this number has to come from the Plant Commission?
Yes.
I move to appoint Mr. Tom Curles to the BZA appointment, uh, from the Plant Commission.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero.
Mr. Chairman, please note, please note also, the Plant Commission will appoint one other member from the Plant Commission onto the Board of Zoning that comes from the Plant Commission itself.
Okay, thank you. Appoint, uh, Park Board Member, two thousand and nineteen, one appointment member, it is a four-year term expiring on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Move to reappoint Mr. Edgar Bassett.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Appoint Border Safety Member, two thousand and nineteen, this is one appointment, it's a three-year term expiring on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one.
Mr. President. Move to reappoint Mr. Rich Pytrick.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Hearing none of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Appoint Economic Development Commission Member, term expires January thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-two.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
I move to appoint Mr. Jeff Coon to the, uh, appointment of the Economic Development Commission.
Second, motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Ladies and gentlemen, Park Board, Foundation and Park Department for two thousand and nineteen.
Nominate Mr. Mike Traxel.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Ladies and gentlemen, Works Department, twenty nineteen.
Move to nominate Mr. Tom Schmidt.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Ladies and gentlemen, Board of Safety, Fire Department, Police Department for two thousand and nineteen.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Mr. Traxel as the ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Safety.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Ladies and gentlemen, Water and Work, uh, Waste of Water Treatment Plant for two thousand and nineteen.
Mr. Chairman, I, I move to appoint Mr. Kevin Conley as the ladies and gentlemen of Waste of Water Treatment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Ladies and gentlemen, Plant and Commission and Board of Zoning Appeal for two thousand and nineteen.
Mr. President, move to nominate David DeYoung.
We have a motion.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Northwest Indiana Regional Plant and Commission Appointment for two thousand and nineteen.
Mr. President, move to nominate Thomas Schmidt.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And second, any discussion? Hearing none of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Lake County Solid Waste Management District Appointment for two thousand and nineteen.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Mr. Traxel as the Solid Waste Management District.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Hearing none of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Ladies and gentlemen, Lake Central School Board for two thousand and nineteen.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint, um, Mr. Tanis Van Alaskia as our ladies and gentlemen of Lake Central School.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Hearing none of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Ladies and gentlemen, Lake County Drainage Board for two thousand and nineteen.
Mr. President, nominate Rob Getzoff.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Uh, Appointed Sheriff Ethics Supervisory Commission Ladies and gentlemen, four-year term, expires December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Mr. President, nominate David DeYoung.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Hearing none of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Did you forget anything?
Mr. Chairman.
One more.
We have one additional one, I, um, I'd like to point, or nominate Janice Van Alaskia as our ladies and gentlemen of the Chamber of Commerce.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Goldman.
I'd also like you to consider, we have letters of engagement from the Town Attorney and the, uh, Plant Commission Attorney, um, like authorization for, from the board to authorize the Council President to engage and to assign those, except for.
Okay.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Okay, at this time, uh, we are going to have a swearing in of our Town Council members, uh, Janice Mallon-Hastie, Club Treasure, will be swearing in Kevin Conley for Ward Two, and Tom Keith Schmidt for Ward Four.
It's always tricky to run.
If there's anybody from family or friends that would like to take any photos, you can come up here and do that right now if you'd like to yourself.
Janice, go over the mic.
Uh-uh.
Grab that mic.
Okay, Mr. Kevin Conley, would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Kevin Conley.
I, Kevin Conley.
Do solemnly swear.
Sowlandly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And diligently.
Diligently.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of Town Council Member.
Of Town Council Member.
Shareville Ward Four.
Shareville Ward Two.
I'm sorry. Ward Two, Ward Two District, according to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Mr. Schmidt, please raise your hand and repeat after me. I, I, Tom Schmidt.
I, Tom Schmidt.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And diligently.
Diligently.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of Town Council Member.
Town Council Member.
Shareville Ward Four.
Shareville Ward Four.
District.
District.
According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. And I just, I just want to say, I'm glad you fellas are back.
Thank you.
Good luck for another four years.
Thank you, Janice. Thank you, thank you so much. Thanks very much.
Um, at this time, we'll, uh, go in order by order, so, um, Mr. Conley, if you'd like to say a few more, just go ahead.
I'll need about a half hour, Tom. So this morning, I'm looking at, at Facebook, you know, how they give you a, uh, notice when you have a memory, you know, for Facebook, so, Facebook told me this morning, it's actually been six years to the day that I've been on the Town Council, which is hard to believe. Uh, it's been a great journey, a great six years, a lot accomplished, pleasure working with all of you, and, uh, the next four years, there's a lot, uh, we have before us, and I'm excited about it, a lot of new things happening for our town, more growth, uh, more infrastructure improvements, um, just improving that Sherwood's a great place to live, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt.
Yes, I just want, I wanted to thank everyone for, first of all, for coming tonight, and, uh, and once again, it's, like Kevin said, it's a privilege to serve the Town of Shareville. I'll be starting my fourth term in January, so I'm fin, finishing my twelfth year this year, and it's been a, it's been a great run, and, and, and we've seen a lot of improvements and a lot of growth in town, and we want to continue having strong management, um, control of that, of all that, and I, I believe with the council that we have, we work very well together, um, politics doesn't come too, they go to play lunch on with our council, and we're here to serve all of you, and we're, and we'll continue to do that. And I, I feel really honored, uh, to be able to serve my fourth term, so I'm looking forward to it, and, uh, thank you very much, and, and then have a, have a nice holiday in New Year, thank you.
Thank you. Um, at this time, also, there is, uh, after we close the meeting here, we invite you into the next room, we have, uh, cake and coffee, and, I don't know if there's punch, but I know there's cake, so. Um, at this time, I will ask for any business from the floor. Any business from the floor? Could you state your name and your address, sir, for the record?
Steve Burton, uh, President of the Sheriff of LFP Lodge One Seventy. I just have a couple of quick comments, uh, Tom, congratulations, Kevin, congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you too, sir. Um, just a couple of quick things, the Sheriff of LFP, as well as, uh, conjunction with the Police Department, uh, on Sunday, we had our annual Shop of the Cop program, or formerly Shop of the Cops, Toys for Kids. Um, we came together, like every year, it was an outstanding job, we had, um, twenty kids that we sponsored this year, but, um, it was outstanding to watch those, uh, kids, the smiles on their faces. Also, with conjunction with the Police Department, with Chief, uh, Deputy Chief, and, uh, the, we, we started this year, was the first year with No Shape November, which we started on, uh, October first, we were able to, um, issue the check for our recipient on Sunday, a seven thousand dollar check that we've raised thus far, which we're still continuing to collect money until January first. So it was an outstanding job to watch, all of us come together, um, it wa, it was, it was just awesome, and to get the Chief and Deputy Chief to come out on Sunday too was awesome. But, uh, um, again, on behalf of the Sheriff of LFP Lodge, thanks, um, to all my guys, brothers and sisters within our department that really came together this time, and all the contributions throughout that everybody donated for that cause, because another boy needs it. Um, lastly, um, thank you guys, on behalf of the Sheriff of LFP Lodge, for the, um, ordinance change for, for the cars, that's a huge, it's been a long time coming, so, uh, we look forward to it, I know it's going to make you guys happy, so, on behalf of myself, LFP Lodge, and the department, thank you guys very much.
Thank you very much for all your work, your job. Anyone else, any comments from the floor? Any comments from the floor? Any comments from the floor? If not, from, uh, the council, I'm sure I'm speaking for all members, we wish you all a Merry Merry Christmas, best of a coming New Year. This meeting is adjourned.
Mr. Freo, uh, when we could do that, and we have to talk to the new board members because the vote will come in January, so that has been started with Dr. Watkins and our attorney, Mr. Freo.
No, this board can set the meeting for the statutory.
I understand.
All right, so we don't know what's going to be happening in January, one, who else have no superintendent?
We will have a superintendent, and we will set the meeting for that. Motion for adjournment. All in favor, you can, aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned, thank you.